And I've asked her if she would consider coming quarterly to one of our meetings to share some of her work with us because, for one thing, we're very, very fortunate to have her, and number two, her work is always a great reminder about what's important. So, thank you, Pat.
Thank you. What's the best way for me to stand here?
The, yeah, just put the microphone right up on your.
Is that chair in the way or?
Actually, Pat, if you could turn it off so people could see you. That way is fine, that way is fine.
The cart rolls out of the way.
Do the cart really does make it all the way through?
Thank you.
There we go.
That's great, thanks. Yeah, that'll be good. What a fuss, huh? Okay, is that, can you hear that all right? Louder? Close.
That's going out to the TV anyway. Just project out here to the crowd and they'll get ya.
Okay. Tiny fingers, ancient things, from Nellie Wong's grandmother's song. Those who can gather, do. Every road is awash with flags. Amphos from gardens just in. Fish on the stove. War talk, war. Every road is awash with flags and the Bangor Daily centerfold. Fish on the stove. War talk, war. Cook good women, cook. And the Bangor Daily centerfold. Old men treading, ask to help. Cook good women, cook. Radio, low, pass it on. Old men treading, ask to help. Under everything, rumors, tremors. Radio, low, pass it on. Grandmother goes to the children. Under everything, rumors, tremors. Wait till I call Grandma, all right? Grandmother goes to the children. Something Johnny wants to show. Wait till I call Grandma, all right? Innocence of incense, that sweet smoke. Something Johnny wants to show. Okay Grandma, it's okay now to look. Incense of innocence, that sweet smoke. Five, playing with his blocks. Okay Grandma, it's okay now to look. Bowing to what he's tugged her to see. Five, playing with his blocks. Praise to make sense of what this is. Bowing to what he's tugged her to see. Best cubes, all animals and alphabets. Praise to make sense of what this is. High as they'll pile under the mantle. Best cubes, all animals and alphabets. Where the power stove used to be. High as they'll pile under the mantle. Boy treasure lined up like a shrine. Where the power stove used to be. His prize beaded moccasins. Boy treasure lined up like a shrine. Apple-sized leather earth. His prize beaded moccasins. Mama's glass egg, he knows, is not a toy. Apple-sized leather earth. Eagle picture stuck to the flue. Mama's glass egg, he knows, is not a toy. Two his size, American flags. Eagle picture stuck to the flue. What in the world? Two his size, American flags. She doesn't see his plane angling in. What in the world? Crashing into the stack. She doesn't see his plane angling in. Everything crumbling, it hits her. Crashing into the stack. Staggering blind to the nearest chair. Everything crumbling, it hits her. He brings her the little globe. Staggering blind to the nearest chair. Show me where it happened, please. He brings her the little globe. Grandma, open your eyes. Show me where it happened, please. Grandma, open your hand. Grandma, open your eyes. Take this. Lots of people have died. Grandma, open your hand. His Sakaja Wia coin searing her palm. Take this. Lots of people have died. Climbing into the arms of the ages. Those who can gather, do.
Beautiful as always, thank you. Next, presentation to Councilor David Key. David sneaking in here. There he is, right there.
So, David, wherever you are, hiding over here. On behalf of the council and myself, the community, we wanted to attend so that we could say thank you for your 10 years of, not only your 10 years of service, but your much, much longer commitment to this community and everything that you've done here, much of which many people don't know. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give up all your secrets, but the fact is that you are and have been an important part of this, the fabric of this community for a very long time. So in trying to think of how to best honor you, I wrote a poem, which is terrible because we have a poet laureate here. I am no poet, but, and you'll see that in just a minute.
I still can't wait.
But you have to understand that the thought is good. It's an attempt to recognize you in a way that I think you'll appreciate. So, the poem is David Key. David Key sat next to me as a councilor for the town. I was never quite sure what he would say, but he rarely wore a frown. With 10 years on the council, during times both tough and fearsome, he had the courage of his convictions and was not afraid to state them. His willingness to help Bucksport and his love for his community are reflected in the years he spent putting service above popularity. His irreverent wit and humor will be most sorely missed in addition to his enthusiasm for all the projects on our list. He was not shy to spread the word of Bucksport and its success, and I am confident that that will still occur no matter what his address. His service goes beyond the town. He is helpful in many ways. Though he is quiet on his own efforts, I assure you they also deserve praise. So, thank you, David, and Paula too, from the council and the rest, from a community who appreciates you, and we wish you both the best. As well as a council proclamation, the Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes David Key for service to the community as a town councilor 2010 to 2019. Your efforts have helped to make our community a better place.
And Sue, 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 they couldn't see that on TV.
What's that?
They couldn't see that on TV because you're over in the corner. And David's ever been camcashed, I saw.
Okay, we're gonna do this again. You've called that, so we'll read the proclamation a second time. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes David Key for service to the community as a town councilor 2010 to 2019. Your efforts have helped to make our community a better place, September 12, 2019. I have to note, though, that you have a gift that's engraved, and it was engraved with the date of the meeting that I thought this was gonna happen. And it said, can we do it another day? And in my drive to be efficient, I had already ordered it, so it's got a different date on it than today, but.
Close it off.
It wasn't before you resigned, so that's. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bucksport, my adopted hometown, has been good to me for over 50 years. Long time. It's always given me more than I asked. I couldn't have been in a better community, and it's been my honor to serve the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was great. I liked your poem quite a bit.
Very nice poem, Sue. I don't think Pat's gonna lose her job.
No, Pat's not gonna lose her job.
All right. Item four, consideration minutes of previous meetings. We have council minutes from 8/22/19, regulatory review from 8/22/19, infrastructure and property from 8/22/19, and town council from 4/17/14, 4/24/14, 5/8/14, 5/22/14, 5/29/14, 6/5/14, 6/12/14, and 6/26/14. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Next item is review correspondence. We have Down East Transportation Ridership Report, and there's also a comparison from 2018 and 2019. Anybody have any comments on that? It's pretty impressive that we're doing that still, so. The next is a Wednesday on Main Season Report 2019. We got your paperwork, Paula. Do you want to talk about it at all, or?
I'll just say thank you. It was a super, really good year, and we didn't use nearly any of your money.
Nearly.
We had a great year.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. What do we have? Item six is ordinance to consider. First is a second reading for amendments to fees and ordinances.
It's me.
Yes.
The council, the Regulatory Review Committee, had gone through a process of looking at fees, and the fees related to the transfer station were decided, and then we also reviewed fees related to the ambulance because those had not been updated since 2012, and so those are included in this packet. But the, this is the, it went back to Regulatory Review because Council Ormsby had some questions on some of the fees. That was resolved without any additional changes, and this is just the second. The next council meeting would have a public hearing on this.
Correct. Any further? Item B is the first reading of amendments to council rules. I don't think we have those together. So we're gonna continue on. Next meeting. Very good. Discussion items, Infrastructure Committee meeting.
We had a presentation, preliminary presentation by Chuck Piper, SunDog Solar, on a proposal to put solar array on our landfill. Just in a nutshell, it potentially offers some intriguing opportunities for savings for the town electricity. I won't go into all the details because it's too detailed for this session, but more follow on that. We probably will ask him to print some more numbers based on our actual electricity cost to see what that looks like. But one of the things, he did indicate that the landfill is, looks like an ideal site. It's relatively flat. It looked to him like there was three-phase power that's available that would, goes into the, it does go into the transfer station right now. So, it offers the capability, possibly 9,648 solar panels, which would be a huge amount of potential electricity. So, more to come on that, but it looks like an intriguing thing to be looking at for the town going forward.
Expect him to come back to another committee meeting.
That's what I would, yeah, recommend, is to get more numbers, print more numbers that would give us more accurate indication. And also, I would add that he indicated, maybe we can look into that a little bit more, some of the regulatory changes, legal changes that have been passed recently that might afford some more savings than previously.
Regulatory review, we, regulatory review, yes. We did the process to filling the council vacancies until the next election, and it's something we're still working on. And it'll be, so we're gonna go back to committee and continue that work, right? Yeah, okay. Item C is request for donation for soccer field flagpole, permission for installation. There was a letter, Sue.
Yes, we received a letter from Mackenzie Smith, who was the class treasurer for Bucksport High School's class of 2018, and they are looking to assist in the, with some funds that are left over from their class, plus some fundraising, part of which is a request from the town to install a sock, a, a, a flag at the soccer field. I had all the right words in the wrong order. And there's a proposal put forward here for what they are trying to do and what they're looking for in terms of the town donating an amount not to exceed $2,500 of the $3,500 total. They have some funds available now on their own.
And she says that the soccer field is the only field that doesn't.
That's correct. It's the only field that doesn't have a flag.
I think it's.
Motion to approve.
Second. For.
Twenty five, $3,500. Put the flagpole.
She doesn't want to be $2,500.
I have just a question on, she mentioned that, or she, based upon helping out, is there anything as part of that cost that our town might be, like, building a hole or anything related to that that might help lower the cost?
If you do an amount not to exceed $2,500, the project could move forward and we would do what we could that was, if there was anything in kind that we could do, we could.
Do we need a resolve on that? Is that just okay for you to?
You can take it right off.
Motion approve up to $2,500. Second.
The motion is second. Anything from the public? Anybody from the soccer team here at all? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Pool bid information is the next item for discussion.
Okay, this is the land of sticker shock. The initial resolve that was in your packet had a number of $700,000 in it because that was a guestimate prior to receiving precise, more precise numbers, estimates from the consultant that is, has put forward the lowest-cost design and construction. And the first number that I saw yesterday was 2.5 million, and that was going nowhere. And so the, I requested a bid based on, without what I'll term the bells and whistles that may have been included in the first one, and that, the second one came in at just over a million. And the number in the resolve that would go to the voters would be a million dollars. That said, the goal for the project is to bring it in at less than that, but it is based on per square foot construction cost with a gunite liner, and our current pool has served the community for nearly 60 years. And if you look at a million dollars over even 50 years, that's $20,000 a year as an investment in infrastructure. And I guess the council has to ask itself if $20,000 a year as an investment in infrastructure for the community is worth it, and if you do, you move this forward to the voters to make a decision, and if you don't, I'm not quite sure where we go. But I would, I would recommend that you move that forward for the, for that, because there, although in talking with Peter Faraher and Nick, there is a strong belief that the cost won't be this high if you, if you make the number less, whatever number you pick. If the cost is more than that, the project can't move forward because you're limited by the amount in the authorization. This is one project. We're not gonna divide it up and make it look small. It's one project, and so I think that we need to fairly apportion what that cost could be. And the, there's no borrowing associated with this. This, this project as proposed is to utilize the funds that are in the swimming pool reserve and fund balance. It's not, it's not to turn it into a debt service, it's to fight the bullet.
Okay. We'll get to that in just a second here, too. Okay, so, on agenda items, the first one is to approve resolve 2020-12, to submit a resolve to the public for the 2019 November election for replacement of the town pool.
Motion approved.
Second. And a motion and a second. Anything from the public on this? So, yes.
Just a quick one. When we put this on the ballot, can we, aside from the price tag of a million dollars, can we also add in there the, where the funding's coming from so people, that would be.
That, that's part of the, question has a financial statement that shows where the money would be taken from.
Anything else? Anything from the council?
So, I sort of have a two-part question. I guess sort of like Paul's. So, to wrap my arms around it, this million dollars wouldn't affect the tax, the mill rate?
No.
Okay, so it's not asking the citizens to add more?
No.
Okay, which is outstanding. And number two, it's gonna be sort of like what we have presently sitting there? Or just the new generation?
Yeah. Awesome.
It's, Nick's here to answer questions. The proposed pool is the same footprint, but it doesn't have the sloped sides on the end. It has straight sides. It's still zero, zero access. You know, you walk in from the end. There's the inclusion of a couple of the splash pad features that were discovered, discussed prior to, and a small slide, which is to sort of bring it into this century.
I think that would be good also to say, if at some point before the election, if we could have some presentation of what it may actually, what it entails, so people can see that we're starting my backyard swimming pool.
There will be information, and the, as I said, there's a financial note that says what the funding is.
Thank you very much. Just a question, maybe after the fact at some point, but have we considered fees for people outside Bucksport, or even a nominal fee to use the pool, particularly for, I mean, I talked to somebody the other day that they love coming to the pool. They're not from Bucksport, they're from at least a half hour away, and they come over to the pool, bring the kids over, and so, but just something to throw out there down the road that, you know, you might want to think about, people outside the community using the pool. You may know better than I do how many people that actually might be doing that, but.
We could track that facilitator that used the council.
Anything else from the council, Richard?
Richard, I just, what's the size of the pool then? Do you know that?
300,000 gallons. I'd say.
The town.
Twenty-five yards, I think, in the deep end.
The town of Carabas, it just replaced the whole pool area in 2015 for a pool that's 30 feet by 60 feet, and it started to sink in. It was built in the mid-'80s and it started to sink in, and they just got this whole thing redone for 580,000.
That's slightly smaller than that.
That is smaller, okay. I just wanted to check on that because it's an outfit out of Herman that had done it. I wasn't sure if they responded to our bid or not.
The, the design had three bidders, two that do extensive work, the one that we've been talking to a good deal. The pricing for per square foot construction, I was told, was based on the same pricing that is currently being done for the construction of the pool piece of the development in Blue Hill, and that's, the, part of the costs that are in this big number are contingency and the what-ifs of it. And we just built a 13 and a half million dollar sewer treatment plant with a half million dollar contingency, and we still have 400,000 of that left to build a solar array. So I have confidence that we can come in under the estimate, but.
And this also includes the demolition and.
Yes, it includes demolition, removal, and the, all of the, the entire construction of the pool.
Also, from what I understand, is the existing change house filter system will still be in place and you'll be using that. So it's basically just replacing the piping and the pool itself. You'll be connecting it to the existing filter system.
That's correct.
Anybody else?
I do have one more. Folks in November, that goes through.
Yep.
Will we be able to open on that? I say we as the town. No?
The, the plan is for that to occur. The, the company that was the low, that would be that if this goes through, we'll have the design ready to put out to bid after the.
Anything else from the council?
Nick, how many people use the pool in the summer? About, what's the number?
Nick, to Moscow Bucksport YMCA, we serve about 200 people per day on, on a hot day. And, you know, we talked about a fee structure. I know Bangor does that. We started tracking, I would call it the membership units, but basically it was whoever visited the pool, we were able to get an attendance ballpark figure, tried to track everybody. And it was our first go-around, so there were some people that fell through the cracks, but we're gonna be able to tell who's using the pool, what town they're from, and all that, all that stuff. And high times of day, too. You know, we can look at what our service day is looking like. If, if we can extend our season perhaps, we're running a 10-week season as it is right now. You know, if we go forward with this work, you know, there's potential, I think, to bring on staff and maybe shrink our hours during the school year, but go 12-week, 13-week season. So that's something we can look at as well.
What, what, what kind of decline did you see for not having the pool?
Hard to measure. It was massive. You know, transportation was certainly a huge issue for folks getting to Craig's. So it was, it was a very large decline, I'd imagine.
Good. Thank you.
I feel like I need to ask this. Is, did you, you see this plan? Did you see this plan that we're doing?
I haven't seen the final numbers, no.
Okay. Are, are we spending enough in order to make this pool what?
From a programmatic perspective, I think that it really opens up a lot of new, exciting potentials for this pool. You know, having a slide in the deep end certainly enhances the family-friendly environment. Not being able to do the sloped sides is gonna make the pool look a little bit different, but it's also gonna help us facilitate some lap swim for adults. So that's another dimension that we haven't had in the past. Yeah, I think that this is gonna be, when this work is complete with those sides, you know, being vertical, we'll be able to do group aerobics and things like that that we haven't done in the past. So it's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Does that give you enough time, Jacob, to get it on the ballot?
Thanks.
Item B is to approve resolve 2015 to approve the administrative consent agreement between Terry Lynn and Jeffrey Gossel and the town of Bucksport.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Everybody. Everybody, anything from the public on this? Anything from the council? All those in favor?
I need your signatures.
Opposed? Item nine, appointment to fill council seat.
I'd like to nominate David Keane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for David Keane. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of David Keane? Opposed? Congratulations. You are willing, I hope.
Well, you know, talking here, it sounds like, you know, you're talking three more meetings. The only reason why I said I'd come forward is that I just didn't want a cloud to be held over the whole election process, you know, whether somebody should have been on or not on. If you really feel as though you need a counselor for the next three meetings, I'm, I'm definitely willing to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Square in the next one.
Jacob has stuff that he can do it after the meeting.
After the, after the meeting, if you could stand by and we'll get you. Thank you. Item 10, approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds. We have none. Town, town manager report?
Okay, I'm very pleased to report that the town has been awarded $139,374 for 19 Scott Air Packs for the fire department. And I would like to extend my sincere thanks to former chief Craig Bowden for preparing, preparing this grant application prior to his retirement. So that's significant for the community. I've had many requests from people related to when the big stack is coming down at the mill, a former mill site. And I have had several conversations with AIM representatives about that. In order to provide an opportunity for people to witness the event, but from a safe location that allows a good view, we are working with representatives of Fort Knox to host an event on the day that the stack is to come down. It is estimated that the stack demolition will occur in October, which is also fairly close to the five-year anniversary of the closure of the mill. And I think that this would be a great opportunity to bring the community together, celebrate the history of the mill years, as well as provide closure as the community moves forward with the bringing down of that stack. So unless the council has any objections, our economic and community development director and I are working on an event for the day of this so that people can be a great vantage point and a safe location, as opposed to people trying to be around the mill or being on the water or any of that kind of thing, which is not going to work. So stay tuned. We'll have more details on that. But that's our idea for how to involve as many people as possible. You would not believe the number of phone calls I've had from people who want to know when that's coming down. I want to thank our current code enforcement officer, Luke Cavelli, and our former code officer, Jeff Hammond, and the planning board for their work in reviewing the site plan application for Whole Oceans. Despite the fact that it was his first planning board meeting that he had staffed, and one week into the job, Luke did a great job of presenting information on the review done by him and our former CEO. The planning board members had done a thorough job of reviewing the applications submitted and had good questions for the applicant. The organization of the application to mirror the requirements of the town's ordinance was a big help as well. Whole Oceans is waiting for its site location and development permit at this time. And after that is received, can begin site work. The enterprise is working on a candidate forum to be held in mid-October, likely at the high school library, which has been the location of some in the past. With nine candidates running for three council seats, the forum, forum will be a great opportunity for people to learn about the candidates' views. The program will be recorded for rebroadcast on our local channel. I've been asked to attend an event for Heart and Soul Champions in Essex, Vermont, from Thursday to Saturday, September 26th to 28th. This coincides with the council meeting night. There is no cost to the community for my attendance at this event, and I am requesting permission to miss the council meeting on the 26th. At this point, there's, there are not pending items for that meeting, and the council could just have one meeting in September. If the council wishes to hold the meeting without me, I will ensure that all information packets, et cetera, are prepared and distributed as usual. I'll be doing second interviews for the assessor position next week with a goal of higher by the end of September. And finally, I met with a representative of the census this week. Information will be going out to residents in March of 2020. This year, it will be possible to participate in the census in four ways, either by completion of a form that is sent to you, by going online and completing it, by a personal visit from a census taker, or by telephone. The addition of phone and internet should help to improve participation in the census. And for Bucksport, it will provide a good opportunity to see how our population has changed since the last census was done in 2010.
Thanks. Anything from the public? Counsel?
I'm going to make a motion that we have no council meeting on the 26th. Second.
Motion and a second. David, you're telling me you just got one meeting shorter? All those in favor?
Enjoying Vermont.
Item 12 is public hearings and permits and licenses. I believe we have a couple. First was for, for a cider pressing event for Main, Main Street Bucksport on 10/5/19.
Motion approved.
A motion and a second. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Motion passes. And the next is for outdoor public projection event on 9/27/19, also from Main Street Bucksport.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion and a second. Anything from the public? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is discussion items on the agenda for the council and the public. Open up the council. Anything we want to talk about? It's on the agenda. Rich, do you have anything? You're good? All right. Counsel?
Sue, one thing I, I mentioned to Sue a while back, kind of out of the box. But I think, if I heard you correctly, you indicated that there are some places in the country where councils might be doing this. But, you know, the 21st century now, there are, there are counselors like myself that tend to travel quite a bit. But going down the road, without trying to limit our pool of candidates prospectively for the seats, if we consider a limited amount of remote participation by counselors, either via conference call or teleconference or something like that, video conference. There are a lot of systems that are very cheap. Boards and committees and councils of other sorts do this all the time. Just something I think we should be proactive and, and look at these things where, you know, you could, you could limit it to a number, just like a number of missed meetings. You could limit the number of, of remote conference, remote attendance to a limited amount. But it's just something I think in this day and age, we ought to consider rather than just, you know, not to, to rule out.
And it might encourage more people to participate.
I think that's a great idea.
Can you get some information on that, Rob? And I don't know what committee I would land or.
Right now, there's a, I, I think that state law doesn't allow for that for elected boards. But there are, for certain actions anyway. But, and there are certain criteria that the person has to be visible and, and able to exchange information at, during the time of the meeting. I, I'll, I'll get more details on that. But I, I, I'm not positive. I think right now that it's, that for councils and select boards that it's not okay by main law to do, to do that. But I, I will, I, I haven't checked that. I will. I, I'll check.
Thank you.
I will check on that.
Video. No.
Anything else from the council? They had nothing.
Oh.
I asked. Wait, is, does somebody have something now? No?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said council twice.
I did.
I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention.
Committee assignments. So if we're not going to meet on the 26th, then it is the.
The 10th, 12th?
12th, 12th.
The 10th or the 12th of October.
I won't be here. I have an anniversary. 10th? So do we all look at the council rules again, or? I, I got an anniversary. I won't be here. You won't be here. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Congratulations. Exactly. Any other committee assignments that we need to? Hannah? All right.
The other one would be infrastructure for solar.
Solar? I think, I think if we wait for him to come back, maybe get some information. Okay. Motion adjourned? Oh, hang on, hang on. Oh, sorry.
Are we going to assign David to Regulatory Review?
For the same.
He would fill in the ones that David.
Finance.
Do we still have that meeting or no?
On the 12th, on the 10th?
Yeah. Is it, I mean, can we still go with meeting those? Or?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, we can, we can have the committee meeting and, and have the discussion. I mean, I think we have good discussion going, so.
That's something we're trying.
Right. Yeah. And, and, okay. You okay with that, Mark?
Yep.
On the 10th? Okay, so we will have that at 6:30.
Does everybody agree with that?
Is it the 10th?
12th, I thought. Oh. 10th, 10th, 10th. Everybody good? So we'll have a committee, 6:30, 6:30. Anything else? Adjourned? Motion adjourned. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you all.